Okay, we're recording and I want to make sure that everybody out in the audience can hear us. We did a test, but I want to do a second test.
How does that work?
Okay, Becky? Yeah?
Yeah, Tabby, I can hear you.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Alright, so folks, it's six o'clock. We had one pre-town meeting for six o'clock. We're going to postpone the official pre-town meeting portion of the night until after our candidate's night, which has been traditionally hosted for us by the Rotary. And they are back this year. We have a contested race, select board. And we really appreciate their taking on this task and informing our voters so they can make an educated choice when they vote for this race. Joe?
Good evening and thanks for coming. I'd like to introduce the candidates for the select board. Scott Salway on my right and Richard Sedlack on my left. What we're going to do is offer each candidate up to two minutes to introduce themselves. And then after that, we'll take questions from the audience. So, Rich, Scott, if you don't mind, we'll start with you, two minutes.
Great. Alright, first of all, just thank you to everyone, to the Rotary, Joe putting this on, the Rotary putting this on. To Richard for his desire to improve this town because obviously that's why we're here and that we're able to voice our opinions and get this out there. And thanks to everyone behind the scenes. I know this isn't easy and I've been witness to that. We've made it through all the glitches, all the COVID stuff and everything, so that's been great. So, thanks to Tabby and Jeanette. And thanks to all of you here and all of those watching on YouTube. I know there's like 14 or 15 people that are going to be there watching, so thanks to you out there, YouTubers. So, why, why Scott Salway? First, my attire. Why am I dressed like this? Because it was dressed to impress. No, because I literally just came from T-ball practice. T-ball practice was from five to six. And I, of course, I could have skipped out, but I think that's just a testament to who I am and my devotion and wanting to give my all for this town, for the people and for the youth of this town. You know, I wasn't going to skip out on T-ball practice, even if that means showing up in my T-ball attire. And so staying on that point, basically, my involvement in the town and in this community, whether I said, you know, T-ball, basketball, doing the youth soccer, Valley youth, Dover sports, I'm doing Wings program, snowboarding, been involved at Mount Snow. Long story short, I spend a lot of time out in the community, therefore I interact with a lot of people. And I like to have my ear to the ground and hear what people have to say. Are you giving me a thirty second?
Alright.
So, yeah, alright, I'll wrap this one up and make quick then. Young family with different perspectives and I chose to be here, like working with others and listening to you. Thank you.
Okay, Richard, you got two minutes and 20 seconds.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. Thank me Town of Dover. Thank you Rotary for being here and giving us a forum to introduce ourselves. My name is Richard Sedlack and I've been a citizen of this town, my only home, since this month in 2007, so 14 years. I fell in love with Dover years before that and it wasn't because of Mount Snow or skiing or anything like that because it reminded me of American Pie, the song, not the movie. And in that, it reminded me of a town I grew up in in upstate New York many years ago in the Sullivan County Catskills, Monticello. And growing up in a resort town, you either love it or you don't. There's no two ways about it. You like the fact that people come there to enjoy where you live or it's just not up for your taste and you leave, you go somewhere else. I left because unfortunately, the businesses that were there in that town didn't keep up with the demands of the resort industry that they were a part of and it fell apart. And when I started coming up here in 2005 to ski, I got that feel all over again. A town where everywhere you go, someone says hello to you. A town where, although Randy will shrug me about this, you can leave the keys in your car in your front yard. A town where it's safe for your kids to go out and play in the yard. That's what I fell in love with when I found Dover. Over the past 14 years, where have I been? Well, when I first came here, I got involved with Dover Economic Development Community because it was new. But I was too New York City then, I wasn't patient enough. I needed to settle in and learn more about the area, learn about what's going on here. And my biggest concern now...
Time is up.
That's it?
That's it.
How do you get a thirty second warning?
I got thrown off of that too.
Oh, yeah, okay. My biggest concern is the future of Dover.
Okay, questions from the audience. We'll give each candidate that has the question addressed to them a minute to, a minute and a half, two minutes to answer. And if there's a rebuttal, a minute over on the opposite side. So, who's the first to have a question?
Rich, can you expand on that? You said your biggest concern is the future of Dover.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, so we don't need science to tell us that every winter's been getting shorter and warmer. I've been witnessing it for 56 years. Without a ski industry, what does this town have that's going to generate the kind of income? What's going to replace what brings people here? I haven't been to Mount Snow since 2011. My physical condition doesn't allow me to skate, but I find many, many things to do here. But without that, what do we have? And what are we doing to invite some other form of income to this area that would be substantial in the years to come?
It was short, 45 seconds. Anybody else who's next? Would you like to rebut this?
I'd like to, yeah, mimic a lot of what he's saying though. Although I do think that Mount Snow and just is going to be prepared for the climate and that they've made improvements, all of that, so I would like to think that while I'd still want to be prepared for the future, obviously I have a family here, that's very important. I like to think that they're a couple of steps ahead of it and we're still going to have that. But of course, there's so many things likewise, I think Richard said it nicely. I love this place and while I, like Richard, find a lot to do here and a lot that I enjoy about it or else I wouldn't raise my family here. You need to look outside of there to have economic activity.
Excellent. You got a question over there?
So, often in the shorter seasons at Mount Snow, are there any concerns within Dover that either of you feel like a top two list of things you need to see changed or things that you're going to work on?
Scott?
You want to take it, Scott?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, goes first.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Sure. I think there are a lot. I think our Development Board, Eric and Shannon, have done a fabulous job. Obviously, I was not on the board prior to them, but I think they have a lot of good ideas. They're communicating, they communicate. They, the town has spent a lot of money in finding, in hearing from all of the people and weighing in. There was a lot of surveys that have gone out. So, using that to embrace not only what's going to keep the people of Dover happy but keep people coming in that aren't already here or don't know about how great this place is.
Richard?
No, last summer with COVID, we became a hit for people to get away to. I've never seen summer crowds like we had last year. And the first thing that dawned on me was that we had no place to park them all. You go to the lake by 11:00 AM in Whitingham and there was no more parking. And that may be something we need to look at. Of course, Whitingham is a different town, but if we're going to start creating something else, we need to think about the volume we can handle. And we don't have to look far. We look at the winters and the volume we have here. What are we going to do to have more parking at the trails we're building? What are we going to do about having more for kids to do in the summer? There is a young man that I haven't found, I haven't been able to find yet, that is passing around a petition through Wilmington and Dover for the Town of Dover to create a playground for kids and a dog park. Every town has a dog park. That's something we might want to look at, but that's more for residents. Again, what ideas do we have? And back in 2007, when I was part of the D E D C, we hired a man named Patrick to sit and organize and run it. And I brought an idea to him that I had at the time through my employment of the appliance industry. I've been in the appliance industry my whole career and I teach in the appliance industry. And I had three manufacturers that were looking for a place to land the school. And I brought this to Patrick over lunch one day and he told me that that's not the vision we want to create for the town for the future. The school here does not conform to the model we want. Maybe you should look in Browderboro or Bennington. Maybe we should open up our eyes a little bit more to what other opportunities for employment or industry that could be in this area.
Next? Ah, don't be shy. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I'm eating my dinner.
I see that.
What are you having?
I'm a little hungry, I'm a little hungry myself.
She's not sharing, Joe.
I know.
Linda Sherman. I'm interested in your thoughts on the fact that the majority of homes that were purchased over this last year were purchased by, excuse me, second homeowners. How do you see that impact? And what are your thoughts on what should happen to our residents and incoming more local people that would like to settle here as far as a housing issue?
Hot topic, Scott.
Richard's...
Can you drop on first?
Alright, I'll get burned. That's a two-sided question. A second homeowner, let's define that. A person who purchased a place here to come up from wherever they live with their family and friends and enjoy the weekend. I want to divide that or separate that from an investment property owner. Somebody who bought a property here to run a business to make money by renting it. And there's a distinct difference. I have, I live on, right out Stugger Road, there's only two houses occupied all year. The other 18 are second homeowners. The people that own their homes that come up here and have pictures of their children hanging around the homes, don't rent them. They come here to enjoy life. I love those people. I have no problem with them. But somebody you don't know, running a business next door to your home is a hot topic for me. And in the discussions I've had with friends and family, it's something that is a debate right now. It's debated all the way up to the state legislature. It's debated in the 50 states. I don't have a warm and fuzzy feeling about it. We have zoning bylaws and we have a method for taking your home and using it for something else and it involves getting your neighbors involved. But the second homeowners, I love the second homeowners. It's part of why I came here, because I'd have friends that would come up and visit at their homes and we'd socialize. But the locals, they deserve the privacy and safety of their residential neighborhoods to be preserved. Scott?
So, I can understand both sides because, well, I think norm, am I wrong? Isn't it most of the time that it's set the homeowners, like our homes are second homeowners that are houses that are being purchased? So Airbnb has opened up an opportunity for some people that maybe couldn't have bought a house that now that they were able to buy this house and rent it out. And I sympathize with your situation and the parking situation and that was really tough, but I think there are, some people have been able to make some extra dollars by having an Airbnb and renting it out. And yes, I also like the second homeowners. I'm in a similar situation. There's only one other house on my street, on my street that's there full-time, but those second homeowners and people coming up here are what stimulates our economy. So, it is a tough topic. Probably wait for some legislation to come down.
Follow-up question, Linda?
I want to clarify my question, maybe I wasn't clear. What I'm interested in hearing about is the impact of the majority of sales that have happened. So, basically, I can't be eloquent about this. There's no rentals for, you know, my son who's looking for an apartment that is affordable, what I would consider affordable housing. So, and, you know, I personally, I don't have anything against second homeowners. You know, I'm looking more at people who file homestead declarations. That's the difference between a resident and a non-resident or a homesteader and non-homesteader. So, I don't care if you're coming up here to rent out your property or do Airbnb. That's neither here nor there for me, but what I'm seeing is that there's so many less available opportunities for youngsters, you know, in their twenties that are out of college and are pursuing careers, jobs, whatever. What are they supposed to do? That's, that's my actual real question. Is housing shortage or rentals?
You want to tackle that, Richard?
I wish I could because housing, affordable housing in the state is a huge problem. And if, the more research I was doing on rental properties, the more arguments I saw that came up in front of select boards all over the state that the second homeowners, this is a theory, that the second homeowners drove the price of real estate up by buying up all these homes and now these homes are even more desirable because people can buy them and run Airbnbs. I don't know if there's any truth to that. But there is truth to the fact that I believe the number is about 40% of the homes in this state are owned by people that don't live here. And yet the people who do live here can't find affordable housing. And that is a difficult problem. Now, I moved here because of the value for the dollar and what I could get with the tax money I pay and enjoy the property I have. And I see that in other people that live here and own homes. But when you are 22, 24 and you have a child and you just got married and the two of you are making $55,000, $60,000 a year, what can you afford? It's a very difficult issue. And if there's something you can afford, it needs $50,000 worth of work. And I don't know if that's something that a select board in our town can take on, but it certainly is something that we cannot contribute to by supporting buying of properties and being used for vacation rentals in areas where there's supposed to be residences.
Scott?
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously not some like one answer or one quick thing that's going to solve it, but, you know, I was even speaking with people and it's like, great, yes, my home value has gone up right now. And that's awesome, but not if this is your home, not if you're looking to stay here, not if you're, unless you're going to downsize or something like that. So, it's great, yes, your home value went up because more people want to move here. I think the fact that people are working virtually and able to work at home, Vermont is much more desirable. If you could, well, I'm biased, I love it up here and I love being outside in nature, so I would much rather be here than be in a congested city. And if I could now just jump on Zoom and do that, well, I would rather be here. I think consistently working to try and upgrade our internet is something that, sure, would that, maybe that attracts more second homeowners or whatever, but maybe they turn into people that are going to be here year-round and grow the population. But I think, yeah, there's no easy answer to that. I love that our home value came up, but once again, that doesn't do much if you're not trying to sell.
Vicki, you had a question?
Yeah, actually, I was going to continue on the housing thing. So, I'm a member of the Bytown Housing Group and here looking at ways, hopefully there'll be some federal money coming to try to figure out some affordable housing and whether it's senior housing, which is another big need in the valley, or affordable housing. So, how would you feel about putting town economic development money behind a pilot program to develop ancillary apartments in certain, throughout the town? As a homeowner, you have the ability to put a carpet over your garage with very little regulation, a few things. But so, I'm curious how you would both feel about putting money behind making affordable housing available in Dover?
Scott?
Sure, well, I think it'd be kind of foolish to say that you wouldn't put money behind affordable housing. That's, you know, of course. I've also learned another thing that being on the select board for even albeit a small amount of time is that I really like to know everything and dig into the details and ask questions and figure out before I come to my own conclusion, whether it's, you know, reading some extra documents, asking some other people, finding other opinions and coming to my own conclusion. So, probably right off the top of my head, of course, like affordable housing, yeah, that would be great. But I'd like to know a little bit more, but that piques my interest, of course.
You know, it's an interesting point Vicki brings up. Just putting, it's very little trouble to put an apartment in your house. Yes, an accessory apartment is something that our zoning bylaws allow. And coming from New York and Long Island over the years, after I left Sullivan County, New York, everybody was doing it and they weren't doing it the proper way, but it was the only housing that was available. Here, we have an opportunity where we could do that. And there are many people, there's a woman that lives right across the river from me that could put an accessory apartment on her house and give affordable housing to two people. There are no apartments available in this area. When the local people want to move up to this town to work at the resorts and the restaurants, there's no place to live and that's just a small part of it. You know, there are also people that want to move up here and start a family and you start off by renting an apartment and it's very difficult to find. Economic development, that's a huge part of economic development, is making it affordable for people to come here, do business here, live here. Everybody that lives here spends money here and that would be good for this town. And it would strengthen our local year-round base population. And that's very important.
Yes, sir.
As I look around the room, I see at least seven or eight people here that were second homeowners that now live here, myself included. Obviously, we don't really have any statistics on that, but using economic development to build some homes here. Would we want it to be privatized and we would give them stimulus money to do it? Would we want to do it on our land? What's your suggestions on how we might go about doing homes here and how we pay for it? Whether it's privatized or it's through the town?
You're up, Richard.
What office are we running for? It feels like I'm running for state representative here, these questions.
Listen, just being a citizen, you got to take care of everything.
So, to Dan's question, I want to try and summarize the question. What you're asking me, Dan, is, what you're asking me is using state funding or using which funds to make more affordable housing?
Economic development funds and we also have land that we own here.
That was similar to Vicki's question.
Right, how do we fund it? Do we make a private, do we go into the housing business?
Ah, okay. So, to take Vicki's question a little bit further, let's get into the sticky part. Who's going to run it? Who's going to build it? Who's going to approve the construction of it? Should it be done by the town or should it be, should we get quotes from a couple of different organizations to take care of it? Depending on which way you go. If we just gave, you know, the state pays a certain amount to people who want to move here to live here. There was not a stipend, I forget the term for it, it was very attractive. So, if we did that to people who live in a 14 or 1500 square foot house, it wouldn't really work for them. But if they had a 2,500 square foot house and wanted to build an accessory apartment, doing the math, it could be 700 or 800 square feet. That's good for one young single person. Maybe there's a tax break in that. Maybe there's a grant in that. Getting into building housing, I don't know enough about the policies that we have here, whether we would want to get, I don't think we would want to get, I don't think the select board would want to get involved in that. I think that's a little big for what the select board does. But getting a state organization, you know, we have SEVCA. Maybe SEVCA could get involved with us in doing something like that.
Scott?
Yes, if there was federal funding and we were able to use that, I would think it would be silly just to pass that by, but I'm trying to think of like crafting a great answer here, but really, that's, if we could just solve that issue as the select board, I think we probably would have, you know, tackled that. If there was federal funding available, I think it would be silly not, not to take advantage of that. And if there were, if there was proof of it working in, with other towns, with private companies, great. You know, once again, I just, my time as a teacher, my time, my short time on the select board, I like to go to the numbers, I like to go to the data, I like to go to the research. I like to figure out what all these other things are saying and what other people are saying and then come to my own opinion based on all of that. And I don't know what the research is behind that. I'm curious and, yeah, I'd like to find out and work on a solution towards it, of course.
Okay, our time has come to ask the candidates for a closing statement. So, I'm going to ask Richard to go first because you started first on the opening, Scott. So, Richard, closing statement and take a couple of minutes.
Would you give me a 30-second warning this time?
You got it.
Okay, thank you. So, this has been an interesting experience for me because I never met Scott before. And maybe we have and I don't remember you and recognize you with the mask on, but the man's heart's in the right place. And to run for the select board, I had to pick a person to run against. And why did I choose Scott? Well, I have nothing personal against him. Like I said, I don't know him and the man's got a great athletic social schedule. I'd like to be his weight. But it's because the people didn't get a chance to elect him and that was the only reason. Vicki has been there quite a long time and I love what she's doing right now with education. I know Dan a long time. We met in my driveway one day. I don't know Joe, I don't know Sarah, so that was the only reason why. So, I have nothing against this man, so I'm not going to say anything bad about what he's done or hasn't done. I know I have an interest in the future. I travel the country up until COVID, about 30 weeks a year in my business. I see a lot of small towns, thousands of small-town people. I ask questions about what they do and I learn from that. Do I know everything? Dear God, no. I don't want to know everything. But I have learned that if we don't maintain what keeps this town alive and we don't look towards a second solution, we could go in the wrong direction. Thank you.
And Scott, take up to two minutes and I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Thank you. So, just going to go back, once again, yeah, I didn't know, Richard, thank him again. So just going to go back, um, once again, yeah, I didn't know, Richard, thank him again for, for giving me this opportunity to come up here and, and, um, you know, have our say, show off what we got and our ideas here, solve the world's problems. I think so, something pretty close like. Why, why Scott's alley when you go to vote? To me, I'm, I'm a part of this community, I've been a part of it since two thousand eight. I chose to raise my family here because I love it here. I'm ingrained in the community, I'm deacon at our church, the sports. And I, and I'm connecting with people. In fact, I, I connected with the person about the dog park on, on Facebook. I saw his post and I thought it was a cool idea. And I said, hey, listen, reach out to our economic development. I've learned a lot. I care about this town like Richard, who did a really nice job presenting himself and sharing his ideas. Uh, and, and either way, I care. And I think you'd be, do a great job with either candidate. And I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, thank you, candidates. And that brings our moderation of, uh, keep the candidates to an end. I'd just like to say that we are so lucky to live in a valley where thousands of people want to come and play and vacation. It has its share of problems with housing and economics and all the other good things that come with it. But a lot of people can't do what we do in this valley. So these are two good candidates, you guys got a great town. And I'm proud to be, uh, associated with you, even though I'm not a member of Dover. But what a great place to live and, and thanks for letting me come here tonight to be part of this. Gentlemen, great job. We wish you both luck. Good luck.
Yes, thank you.
Select board meeting, uh, the pre-town meeting will start in a few minutes. Want to get ready, seated and squared away.
Good luck, man, good luck.
Take a bathroom break, get a snack, it's going to be fun.
Oh, souvenir.
Hey, Rich is going to be here, I think Sarah wants to sit there.
Silly thing, it's a holiday. The last time I did something like this was Sunday, parliamentarian and student council.
Early on when I was running, we had one person who ran for every one. So he ran for all the select board seats, remember Sarah?
So he had to sit here and do that every time?
He just sat here and did it, but he, you know.
A lot of times we just, people would just get two minutes to say something.
Yeah.
But this was good.
No, this was good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, uh, the coaching thing, uh, next Wednesday, right?
Yes, six to eight.
Six to eight, do we have to sign up?
No.
Is that the, that's the Johnson and Johnson, right?
With chat, you're done.
Uh, that's what I've been looking for.
Let everybody know, um, who may want to do it because it's, um, Rescue Inc. is doing that.
Oh, is that who's doing it?
Yeah.
I'm going to tell everybody six fifteen, so I know I get there at six and I get mine.
He, well, they, they planned on a hundred. Last time they hit Devil's Bowl Speedway and, um,
Where's that?
I don't know, northern Vermont, somewhere up north.
Okay.
And, um, they only had, they only did thirty-four.
Wow.
So that's why we put the big thing on the sign. Is that where you saw it, was on the sign?
Yeah, last night, coming home from North Conway.
Yeah, we just got it on yesterday. I just, he just called me Sa, uh, Sunday night.
Oh, that's funny.
Asked me, yeah. They're just trying to reach out. I was actually going to try to call Randy at the mover and see if the mover would transport people.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea because it stops right across the street and they run until what, ten o'clock?
Yeah, so.
That's phenomenal. All right, thank you.
Do you want to call your media tour?
Yeah, is there, we're standing. Okay. All right, hello, everybody. So I'd like to call the Dover pre-town meetings, including a select board meeting to order at, what time is it?
I have.
Six thirty-five. Six thirty-five, six thirty-five. Are we recording?
We're recording, somebody needs stories, their hand, I'll flag.
Okay.
Up there. You see?
Hold on me and I'll look for them.
Start to wave to myself.
I asked Rich Warner to come and moderate it. I think we all need a little practice, not that Rich does, but, uh, that we all need to get back in the in-person meetings. But, um, I really appreciate you coming to moderate tonight.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Thank you, everybody. Um, Joe, thank you, if he's still here, I think he left. He was smart, he ran away. Um, you guys did a great job, the two select board candidates, that was really nice. Most of the time we just haven't, you give a two-minute presentation and then we move on. Andy, um, has done a wonderful job making sure that we're going to have a good, safe, um, COVID-free, um, pre-town meeting. And I think if you look in your book on page nine, um, and those of you that are home, when you get your books, um, it has on page nine how you're going to vote. So Andy's, um, you're going to have to give him a little, little leeway because he can't get into Corinthia till nine o'clock and he's got to have everything set up. It's going to be a little different than we're used to where people come in and go out. So, um, I think, Andy, can you just, do you want to talk, do you know anything about it? Do you want to just take a minute and tell people how polling's going to go?
Sure, so, uh, we're going to have town meeting at Corinthia this year. Uh, and the polls will be open, uh, per usual, when there's no presidential primary from ten AM to seven PM. We're going to make it, um, as homie and as, uh, as much like you're used to as we possibly can. Um, there'll be distancing and mask wearing and so forth. But, uh, if it's a nice day, we're going to open the big garage doors at Corinthia and have a sort of indoor-outdoor feel to the place. Um, you can, uh, get absentee ballots, um, today if you like, uh, tomorrow, um, in my office. You can call and request, I will mail them to you. Uh, if you'd rather not, uh, take a chance on the mail being delayed for whatever reason, just come into my office, vote right there, take it home and vote, bring it back. We have, uh, ballot drop box, if you, if that's convenient for you. Uh, if you work during the day, can't drop it off to me. Um, you can just drop it in that ballot drop box beside the front door of the town offices. Um, everything should, uh, should be all set for, um, town meeting day as far as, uh, if you want to wait and vote at town meeting. Uh, one thing, Rich, if I could, I would like to just take a quick minute to, uh, direct you to the, uh, inside cover of your town report. Town reports are available in my office and at the Dover Free Library. Um, there's a little boilerplate at the bottom of this, um, that has survived a few years and is out of date. Um, the auditor's report. Uh, Linda Sherman is no longer, uh, one of our elected auditors. Um, and this, this page has just been reproduced, uh, in succeeding town reports. We in Dover employ, uh, an outside auditing firm, Sullivan and Powers, uh, who produce a report, they come and camp out, uh, in our parking lot every year and, uh, and they bother Marco to no end and, and make sure everything is kosher. Um, this eliminates much of, uh, the reason that you have something like, uh, like this auditor's report, uh, language at the bottom of the inside cover. Um, our, our elected auditors don't perform that function any longer. That is an anachronism. Sullivan and Powers for, uh, performs that function. But I would like to note that this is incorrect, that Linda, Linda Sherman did not review any books. Sullivan and Powers reviewed the books. Our, uh, town report nowadays is not so much an auditor's report as a town meeting guide. Um, technically, um, you know, uh, we would have, uh, one of our current elected auditors, uh, names on, on this. Um, and moving forward in the future, we will do that. Thanks. Sir?
Uh, you didn't mention the ballot boxes outside your office. That the ballots have to be in that box by the end of that day or?
That's correct, so thank you, Dan. Uh, if you're going to drop the ballot in the ballot box, you need to drop it off, um, uh, no later than five PM on the day prior to the election. Um, I won't be there on the day of the election to collect them. Um, I will have a small padlock on that box so that you can't drop your ballot in that box. Um, if you show up, you forget it's locked up, come up to Corinthia and hand it to me. Thanks, Dan.
Andy, stay here for one sec if you don't mind. So one of the things, I, I talked to Andy today because this is going to be a, a whole different world. And, and I joked a little earlier, I don't know if those of you remember, many years ago, somebody robbed a bank in Wilmington and then police chief, um, Tom Donnelly wound up shooting him down. Um, he, he got away and he, you know, because, and he robbed the bank in Vermont because he figured in Vermont they wouldn't have radios and the police cars or policemen. So it would be an easy, easy job to do. Um, and I was in the bank the other day and I'm thinking to myself when I'm talking to the teller, I said, you know, three, four years ago, you go in with a mask like this on and they would probably be calling the police to come and shoot you. But, um, nowadays, you know, it's so different. So one of the things I talked to Andy about today was, um, you know, so, we're going to have a few ground rules. So, um, we're asking everybody to show respect and wear masks if you, um, we're asking everybody to have six feet of distance. And I don't know if people can see the, the audience here, but we're doing really good with that. This group is a little closer, but, um, I put down, if you're from a cluster or a household or a group, you can be closer. Probably Rich and, and, um, you guys are more of a cluster, you're a little closer. So, um, but, you know, if you have like you and your wife come, you guys can sit together. Um, we're, we're requesting that you wear a mask, we can't mandate it. Um, but there's going to be in a, a separate location if you don't want to wear a mask. We're going to have some, um, stuff set up so hopefully we can hear people through the masks. You guys did, uh, Scott, and you guys did a really good job up here with your masks on. Um, so that worked out really well. Um, if you come and you don't have a mask or your mask breaks, Andy collected a bunch of PPE, he'll have available there, including masks. And I guess we're going to have some, um, sanitizer there. Um, when you're in your line to vote, please also, you know, respect the, the ballot people, the election officials. I mean, they did a great job for the annual, or for the presidential election and primaries this year. Andy, you, you and your people, fantastic work. Um, so if you could, you know, wear masks. And, um, I'd like to thank Andy because, you know, a lot of towns gave up on a town meeting and Andy really felt strongly about having an in-person meeting, not only for the town, but also for the River Valley School District, who he serves a clerk for there. So Andy, great job and we really appreciate it. Yeah, we'll give Andy a book. And just again, please at, at the meeting, remember when he has to also be able to observe the voting and observe the meeting. So, you know, try, let's try to work with him and it'll be a great meeting and one of the last true democracies. Where else do you get to go and vote on a budget and vote on, on your taxes? So, thank you. So we're going to go through Article One, it's all the Australian ballot. You're going to have a lot of positions to elect. Um, I guess we are going to be using a tabulator for this, um, election. You're going to elect a three-year auditor, a first constable for a year, a five-year library trustee, a four-year library trustee of a five, four years left on a five-year term, town moderator, a three-year select board, a two-year select board. And the one contestant race is a three-year term, but there's two years remaining. If you get appointed at, at a town position, um, you don't get appointed for the full term that's left. You get appointed to the next regular or special election. So that's why usually you only vote for two, um, select board members. This year you'll vote for three. And trustee of public funds, a one-year term. Um, and page five and six in your books have, how do we operate a town meeting? And this we did a few years ago, um, when I first became moderator. I talked to Andy and I talked to my cohort, who was the school, um, person back then moderator. And we just have some rules because sometimes people didn't know how to, how to react. So we do ask that you be, raise your hand, you be recognized. And we'll have a really good town meeting. The only thing I want to put in is please read the book ahead of time because it may pay off for you, um, on town meeting day. It has in the past, there's not as many history questions this year because it was a tough year, but, um, be prepared. So the first article of business, shall the voters accept the annual report of the auditors and other town officers, which is your book? Um, and like Andy said, inside the front cover, the auditors don't actually audit the financials anymore. We hire Sullivan and Powers, I believe. Um, and, and like Andy said, they work with that. But we do need to have a motion, um, when you're recognized, a second by somebody who's recognized. And then remember the person who makes the motion, the person seconds gets the first two dibs at questions or discussion. Um, you can allow somebody to address the issue first. Um, when we get into the budget, you may want to have the select board explain why the budget is the way it is. And then reserve yourself to a question after it's been presented, or you can just ask a question. So that one, Article Two is really easy. Article Three is a little more difficult. Shall the voters compensate town officers as follows? Select board chair, twenty-five hundred dollar annual stipend. Select board members, two thousand dollar annual stipend. Town auditors, nineteen dollars and three cents per hour. Town clerk, sixty-six thousand, three thirty-five fifty-three. Annual salary, town treasurer is a five thousand dollar annual stipend. And all others, chairman, Vermont minimum wage plus a dollar fifty an hour. Members, Vermont minimum wage and mileage based on the federal reimbursement rate for the month in which the mileage occurred. I think it's currently fifty cents, Marco?
Fifty-five or fifty-six, somewhere in that range.
Okay, in the fifty-five, fifty-six cent range. So is there any, do you want an explanation? Are there any questions? Does anybody not know why we do that?
Um, I'll just address the, um, we, there's a three percent increase in the town clerk salary, the, and the, uh, town auditor salary, um, hourly rates. So that's built in from last year.
So these are only, these aren't like in-town employees, these aren't the road foreman, commissioner, police people. This is the people that are elected or appointed by the select board. And if you look on page forty-one through forty-seven in your book, that's the wage page. Um, I think somebody called it at one time. So that just gives you a list of, of the different salaries. And I'm pretty sure, but they didn't dare ask the question of Richard and Scott. And I'm sure it was that two thousand dollar stipend that they got onto, or wanted to get on the select board. And for Vicki, it probably works out to twelve and a half cents or?
An hour, yeah.
Thirteen, fifteen, who knows? Article Four, shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures, or, uh, general fund expenditures for operational expenses of two million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents for the coming year? Pages twenty-five to thirty-three are the operational expenses. So I will turn it over to the select board to give you a brief explanation and then we'll take any questions.
Okay, so if you go to page thirty-three, you can see that the amount that we are actually asking for in the budget that has a few holes in it, um, is down eleven percent from last year. This is the general fund, this isn't the highway, that's a separate budget. Um, we do have several items that are up for art, warned article. There's four of them. And if they're voted on in total as they sit, um, at, in the articles, they would be articles, let's see. There would be articles nine, ten, eleven and twelve. It would be adding two hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars to that two million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight eighty-one point six four. So if we, if we vote, vote for those, then our actual total amount we would be voting that, that we would have to raise an appropriate, you know, raise taxes for would be two million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. That is two thousand, twenty-eight dollars higher than this year's amount, uh, than the, uh, That is $2,028 higher than this year's amount, than the, from the 2021 budget. So it's $2,000 more. And included in the, the budget are raises of 3% in salaries and of course insurance costs. And I think our, I think the most important thing was we asked our department heads to, to work hard to try to level fund or, or cut, you know, cut where they could without reducing services and everybody did a great job. So to come in with a budget that's $2,000 over what we had, you know, if everything's voted in, I think it's an outstanding testament to the great department heads we have.
So just as a clarification, Vicky talked about articles nine through 12, so you will not be able to discuss those specific articles at that time. You can only discuss the article that's in front of you, which would be the overall budget. And thank you to the department heads, Randy and I see Travis here and Andy with?
Everybody.
His, y'all did a great job, so thank you. Are there anybody, any questions from anybody? I don't think anybody up top. Andy?
So, the 11%, does that reflect the, the previous budget number? Have we always voted the library's budget as an article or am I?
No, that, we started doing that a couple of years ago. I think it's a great opportunity for the, the library to come and explain to the, to some, maybe some new people, what they are about, the new programs they might be offering. And it's also almost a quarter of a million dollars. So I think it's a pretty large amount. And that, that I think it's important for, for the library to tell the town just how many great services they provide and, and what the town's getting for it.
Thank you.
Tabby, can you, is there, the people that, there's a hand, is there a hand up?
Is there a hand up?
No. Is there, was everybody unable to hear Andy's question? Because I know the mic is right here and does it pick Andy up because, or do I have to repeat?
It's pretty sensitive.
Okay, well, she's shaking her head.
No, she heard it? Yep, Shannon heard it.
Okay, thank you folks on TV, yay. Okay, Article Five, shall the voters authorize highway fund expenditures for operational expenses of $1,499,236.64 for the coming year? So page 34 and 35 is the highway budget. And I will allow, I'm not sure who's gonna speak to that, you again, Vicky?
You guys want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, the highway budget is also down this year by 2%. A lot of that is we had some retirements of some very long-tenured and very valuable employees. And so when Bobby Holland and now Billy Short have both retired, that, that gave us some savings in, in wages. If you vote for this as well, assuming that you voted for everything on those articles on the general part and the highway department, our total ask is not gonna be down 8%. It's only gonna be down slightly under 1%. It's down $30,735. So overall, budget is down. So when you vote or don't raise more, that's, that's what it might be on track to do. So I think Travis as well, first year doing it all himself, nice job. So.
Yay Travis, I'll applaud for you buddy. So just as a point I always used to make on the school side is you remember too, if you have a zero increase, that's actually a reduction because a dollar this year is not gonna buy you what a dollar last year bought you. And if you don't believe it, just go down the lumberyard, try to find some sheet rock or pressure-treated lumber.
Or some siding for the police department.
Yeah, or siding, where's Randy? That went way up, didn't it buddy? I got bids for, for conduit and they're only giving them for three days and it's gone up over 30% in a week. So, questions of Vicky? Or we can pick on the road commissioner because he's here too. No questions? Oh, come on, somebody asked, why are the trucks red? You're getting off pretty easy, new guy, next year they'll be all over you buddy. Next one, shall the voters raise and appropriate $600,000 for the capital paving fund? Thank you for having that as an even number, folks. That's on page 37. And Vicky, you wanna pull that one too?
Yeah, okay, so we pulled $50,000 out of the capital paving, less, we're funding it $50,000 less than last year because coming up will be capital equipment and we need to fund that more. And again, Travis worked, worked hard, we're still gonna pay the same amount. We're gonna, and he might, if you wanna ask him what he was planning to do for paving, he's gotta ask. So we did take $50,000 because we had to increase further down our capital equipment amount. So we're trying to keep it fiscally conservative as we can this year, still to provide the services and keep our town in good shape.
So again, if you go to page 37, it does have what he plans to pave this year. Do you wanna speak to it at all Travis or?
I mean, there's only three or four on there, there's four or five on there.
Five.
And it would be Amique Road, Captain Boplin, Ellis Brook, and Vallevee. And, I mean, a lot of it's resurfacing, some of it's new. We're just trying to stay on, on track with, with what we have in store. Bob had a pretty good plan set in place, so I'd like to continue with it.
I'm sorry, it's four roads you had on here, so. Okay, is any questions? Yes?
So I'm just curious, Travis, you probably can answer this. Are you seeing the same sorts of random price increases with materials that we're seeing in other areas?
Yes, but the board has worked great with me as far as me getting out to our contractors and/or equipment people or, and just, they're allowing me to go ahead and place the order and get us locked in at a lower rate before all these inflation prices are gone. So we're doing what we can to get our ways where.
So the bids for these paving projects are already?
Uh, yeah, we're all, we're all signed up and good to go for this one. Yeah.
Just as, as a kind of a housekeeping item, Randy, too. Remember at the meeting, you're gonna have to stand up and be recognized and state your name before you speak. And all questions get addressed to the table and then we'll, we'll get you the right answer. So I hope everybody heard that, but that was a good job and good job select board to make our money go further. Any other questions on Article Six? We might be done before lunch, yes? Go ahead.
I just have a quick question on page 36. I note that the grand list there is 1,001 million versus on the grand list list, it's 1,004 million. Did I miss something?
No, can I answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
See, then on page 36, you're looking at something that is pre-adjustments, pre-finalized. It's just, it's a number that we use to calculate the tax rate before it's final. We have to have something.
If you could repeat it, I, I lost the, sorry.
The answer is that number that you're seeing on page 36 is not the final number. That was a number they were using from our treasurer, a number they were using to put together to kind of figure out what the tax rates would be. It's not the finalized number. Is that okay?
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
Um, that really was in Article Six, but that's okay. Article Seven is, shall the voters raise and appropriate $500,000 for the capital equipment fund? Again, page 38 and 39, I think Vicky spoke a little bit about it. And we'll let her say more.
Yeah. Okay, so this is the one line item that is up and it's up significantly. It's getting more expensive to buy everything, dump trucks, graders, fire trucks, police cruisers, everything. Last year, we asked the, the taxpayers for $300,000. That is not gonna be an appropriate amount going forward. We need to start putting more money into the capital building fund, I mean, equipment fund. At some point, we're gonna need to replace some fire trucks. So we have to, we, we're gonna, we're gonna put some extra money. The, the select board would like to see the town put extra money in that particular fund. That's why we took $50,000 out of the capital paving and the money is all, all, all that savings and $150,000 more is going into the capital equipment fund.
Are there any questions? And that was, didn't we have a credit discussion, was it last year that we?
We talked about it a lot, a budget. It was a big budget discussion.
Are there any questions about that? Sir, Mr. Sadek.
Yes, Vicky, I think what you were saying was the money, some of the money that's appropriated for this year's budget for the capital equipment plan would be used or we're saving up for what's gonna be necessary to spend in 2023.
And?
We got a big one in 2026. So we're putting money towards that now rather than just turning to the taxpayers and saying, welcome to 2025 town meeting, we need $950,000 for fire truck.
We try to plan as best we can going forward and make it more of a level tax rate versus crazy ups and downs. But this is one fund that needs extra money to allow us to continue to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
And you know, if you look at a lot of other town meetings, you know, it's, there's always special articles to buy a plow truck and a plow and buy a fire truck and buy police cars. And I think, you know, the town going way back, I've been told it was Don Albano back in the late 70s. I know Phil Bartlett was big with the capital budgets and it makes a lot of sense. It's, it makes for a nice even tax rate instead of, you know, having a bond for something and have that big increase every year. And you know, it's not only just because the select board planned ahead, but that the town had faith in the select board and the, you know, our previous leaders in the town. So, you know, it's really cool to see these capital funds. I will tell you, right after Irene, the town of Dover got a lot of our stuff back together. And I had gone to a bunch of meetings where other towns were like, couldn't, didn't do anything because they didn't have any funds. And we were able to borrow from ourselves to front the money to get our infrastructure back in the shape. So, you know, it's, it's been used very wisely, so good job on that. Are there any other questions on the funds, capital funds? Offset, Tabby? Moving right along, this is an easy one, folks. Article Eight, and if you notice, Article Eight is shall the voters raise and appropriate $80,000 for the capital building improvement fund.
So we were talking about the capital equipment fund. I think we still need to talk about the capital building fund.
Well, that's what I'm on, that's what I just read. Article Eight. So the voters raise and appropriate $80,000 for the capital building improvement fund. And I thought it was cool that you had Article Eight and $80,000. So anyways, I think Vicky's gonna talk about that one because she got really excited about it.
I just was spacing out.
Sorry.
This is exactly what we've asked for last year, going forward. We did readjust some things. We've got a problem with our water system up here on the common. Hopefully we'll be getting some federal money to help offset it, but we had to put money, move money to the library and the water system up here because we just don't know how the PFAS contamination is going to work out. But we think that we were able to move a couple of things out and $80,000 should be sufficient.
And that's on page 40 of your book. And yeah, that's a pretty big number, 67,000 for PFAS.
And, and furnace.
And the furnace. Well, if you can't drink the water, do you need to heat it? Article Eight, is there any questions? Okay, we'll move right along to Article Nine. Shall the voters raise and appropriate 222,228,728 for the Dover Free Library? If you look on page 77 and 78 is the financials. There's also a letter from Ed Brookman, the chairperson. He talks, he does say, is, is there anybody from the library here that'd like to speak to that? Anybody online from the library? So I, usually at town meeting, there'll be somebody from the library for you to ask questions of. It does say in Ed Brookman's letter that there was a $30,000 surplus, not having to use all the budget of health and disability insurance. And that's allowed them to make the request, not as high as it may have been. And I don't know if anybody else would like to say anything or ask any questions. Moving right along to Article 10. Shall the voters raise and appropriate $20,000 for Deerfield Valley Rescue Inc.? And that's been for the last three or four years. They've been asking for that. They have a letter on page 106 and 107. I don't know what it comes out for residents, probably. But that's a number that they've, they've asked for in the past, I don't.
That's no, there is no change.
No change? Any comments, questions? And usually somebody's here from Deerfield Valley Rescue, so they'll be able to speak to it with your permission. Article 11, to raise and appropriate $20,000 for support and services at home, which is SASH. If you go to page 112 and 113, there's a letter from them and I know Becky is on the TV. Is she?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to that?
I'm sure I can answer any questions. I definitely have a presentation that I will get up and talk about. This year especially, SASH really kicked into gear in the valley. Back in March, we opened up a free-to-all-the-valley emergency food shelf. And we funded it all with donations or funds from Shire's Housing. We ran and operated that weekly from the last week of March until throughout July. Then when we closed it in July, we then brought in a veggie van goat complement of the Vermont Food Bank, which is now a monthly event held in Whitingham for all of the valley as well. Also along with that, we called residents that needed check-ins during the pandemic. Definitely SASH participants, but we called many that were not on SASH just to make sure they had what they needed. We picked up medication, we delivered food. We're still part of the Vermont Everyone Eats program and helping partner with Wilmington Works. We are distributing originally 1,000 meals a week to the valley and now we're down to 550 meals a week to the valley.
Okay, thank you Becky, is there any questions for Becky? Andy?
Yeah, Rich, my name's Andy McLean. And I don't have a question for you Becky, I just wanna thank you. It's kinda hard to remember what things were like in the beginning of the pandemic and the need that was there when everybody all of a sudden shut down and there were some really scared folks earlier with the candidates. Like you talked about a lack of affordable housing. It's not easy to make a living around here. And there's a lot of folks who are one paycheck away from their kids being hungry. And Becky stepped up, went to Mount Snow, got the space, got the food donations. People came up, no questions asked, could fill their, their grocery bags and, and have a little more peace of mind in a very scary time. Standing that up the way you did at a moment's notice and meeting that need was so impressive. And really, I would like to thank you for that on behalf of the folks who, who came and were there. Thank you, man.
Thank you. I was happy to do it.
Are there any other questions? Kinda just echoing what Andy said, one of the other things is I, you know, I've had several people that have had several people that have had surgeries or needs for some reason or another, needed some crutches or needed a walker or needed a wheelchair. And Becky always seems to be able to come up with that kind of stuff. I would hate to go to her house because I don't know, it may be kind of full and hard to get in, in the front door with all the medical equipment she has in there. But she's been a huge resource and it's been very appreciated, so. And we, I can't say that at the town meetings, I'll say it now, so. Support Becky. Article 12, shall the voters raise and appropriate 3,372 dollars for Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategy SEVITS activities, page 104 and 105. Randy Capitani, I think, weren't you part of that at one time?
I was a board member and not anymore, but I think we have-
Oh.
Somebody else over here.
Laura, I don't have my glasses on, I can't see that far. You want to speak to that?
I can. It is, it is the annual appropriate, it's, wasn't prepared. This is the annual request that is made to all Wyndham County towns, Wyndham region towns to support implementation of the Regional Economic Development Plan. And it goes to leverage additional funds and stand-up programs particularly around workforce development and innovation. And Dover has the distinction of being one of four towns who has supported this effort since its inception and claim a lot of success in a number of the programs. Dover in particular sees benefits around the workforce issues. There are programs for all, in all of the high schools that Dover sends to as well as, there've been a number of interns placed here and small business assistants.
Thank you. Did not mean to put you on the spot. And just so people know, because this usually comes up every year, you guys, SEVITS will have a person here to speak to this. And this is something that gets asked of every town at town meeting. I think all the Wyndham County towns, do you know what the turnout or how, it's usually almost everybody supports it, don't they?
It has increased every year. I don't know what the number is this year. I think it's 16 or 17 towns. Most of the towns in Wyndham are supporting. So sometimes include it in their budget. SEVITS is happy to have included on the town meeting morning and speak to it and have people ask questions about, you know, the work that's going on in the regional.
And this isn't just a made up number, but you ask usually for so much per?
Three dollars per person, per resident.
Per resident, not voters. Okay. Are there any other questions? Comments?
I just have a comment. And it's not about SEVITS. It's about all of these appropriation requests. And I want to thank the Dover Historical Society for reducing their appropriation request by 25%. They normally, in the last few years, have asked us for 20,000 and this year that they decided that they can live with 15 and I do appreciate that. Thank you, Dan.
Well, thank the trustees, they all voted, wasn't just my-
We'll thank them.
Okay. Well, thank you to the historical society. Thank you for, Laura, for SEVITS. So I will move right on to Article 13. So the voters authorize the selectmen to apply any surplus from the current fiscal year to reduce taxes in the next fiscal year. So if you go to page 36 in your book, page 36 has the application of funds, I believe. And if you look down under 21, 22, proposed, I don't see a less surplus. I'm sorry. I messed up. So we don't know what that number is?
No, we don't know until June.
Till June?
End of, till we close.
Oh, so you're talking about the current year fiscal, current year money?
No, we know what we have now.
Okay.
If I could for a second?
Oh, go ahead, please.
So what we'll do is this column to the right, proposed 21, 22, at the end of, at the end of June 30, we'll look at, we'll look at whether there's surplus or not. And we will also probably change the grand list number based on what it is as it's being calculated right now. So these are just placeholders, but we don't know that surplus till after the books are closed.
Okay. Do you have a rough idea where the-
Point, no.
Okay. And just, I guess then, this is a question for me, if it's okay with every, do people mind? Was there any surplus applied to the budget last year? Because it shows a zero.
For last year, it was based on the surplus from June 30, 2019.
Okay. So are there any questions about that? So this would be, this isn't really a number vote. This is more of a yes or no vote to an unknown number that we will be given come?
The end of June, we'll find out when-
August, September, when they do the audit. Yep. Okay. Article 14. So the voters authorize the selectmen to sell properties which a town has acquired by gift or through tax sales. If you go to page 52, there's a very nice article from our delinquent tax collector who says that there were no sales that the town acquired because everything sold or got paid off. Correct, Marco?
That's right, yes.
So if you people remember, if you people, if people remember, some of the old town reports were half delinquent taxes. So it's really nice to see all your delinquent taxes on less than a page. So good job to everybody who's worked hard to get these reduced. And I remember some very heavy discussions back in the Jane Chatwick Chairwoman days when there was so much delinquency, they actually had to raise the tax rate to cover the delinquencies, which was kind of a real, real issue. So good job, Marco. Pat on the back.
Thank you.
Any questions about delinquent taxes? I mean, land for sale that the town acquires that were delinquent taxes while we're on Okay. Article 15. Shall the voters authorize the selectmen to set the tax rate sufficient to cover the approved expenses of the town of Dover and the town of Dover Highway for taxes due on September 15, 2021 and February 15, 2022? Again, that's page 36 and those are projected tax rates until they get the grand lists finalized, get all our numbers finalized and know how much the surplus is or isn't, then they'll be able to come up with a tax rate. Marco, as the treasurer, presents that to the select board and the select board votes on it and approves it. So they'll be at a warned meeting so you can come. So all we're doing is saying, yes, we give them the ability to do that. I guess a good question, maybe Andy knows, what happens to Marco or the select board? What happens if they vote no not to allow you to set the tax rate?
I have no idea.
Guess we all have to pay taxes. Article 16. Shall the voters authorize the selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Have we ever borrowed money in anticipation of taxes? I don't ever recall it.
We have a lot of reserve funds. Marco does a nice job managing those and I, I, it's just, you never know what might happen, but I don't, I don't anticipate it. Do you, Marco?
No. We also have a line of credit with Federal Savings and Loan that we got last year. That's on, it's not included in anything, it's not drawn, it's just on the shelf.
Okay. So we always approve this just in case. Again, you know, we don't know when the next Irene is going to hit or Eileen or whatever that next storm will be named. So it's always good to have the ability to borrow if they have to. And of course, remember, the selectmen do everything in open meeting. Something like that is not, would not be an executive session, so there'd be a discussion so you can all, again, you know, this is the most democratic process, you know, in the whole world, actually, you know? One of the few states to still do town meeting and you get to come in and vote and have your say. Except on the next article, Article 17. To discuss any audience the voters would like to discuss and conduct any other business that may legally come before the voters. So I say that in this, anything you bring up here is non-binding. So even if everybody said, we want the town to paint the town offices bright yellow, it's not binding on the select board. The select board can take it under advisement and maybe they will paint it bright yellow or maybe not, but you can't do binding business. But you can say things like, Andy, your trails committee has done a great job. I see them out working on that ridge trail even though there's no parking for them and you've got a bunch of your people out. And Travis, great job with the roads this winter. It was a lousy winter and for you to keep things on the road when the state couldn't plow Route 100, kudos to you. And Randy, your folks did a great job making sure people wore their masks and, and, you know, helping out with all the people that needed help. Becky, you did a great job helping us. There will have a brief moment of silence for those that we lost. Unfortunately, if you read Andy's report, a lot more deaths this year in town. So it's a sad time for us, but it's also a happy time because hopefully soon we'll be able to get back to somewhat normal or new normal. Laura, are you going to be, come to speak to the voters?
Going to try. The legislature is still in session, so.
Okay. And what, so probably we wouldn't see a senator either because there's no town meeting break right now.
You might, you can zoom. I mean, if you can do it via Zoom.
Okay. Are we going to have Zoom available?
We weren't, we weren't planning, but if we knew in advance somebody wanted to, I don't know, Tabby can, if we can pull this all together, if we knew in advance.
As long as they don't want to vote.
Yeah, I mean, no, no, if we had a senator or if Laura can sneak out, if she's in between stuff.
Maybe, maybe we could see if we can do that under Article 17 towards the end of the meeting. Is there any, anything, I'd like to just bring one thing up. Rich Sedlack was asking me about it. I got a call Sunday night from Rescue, Inc. and they're looking to do a vaccination clinic at the firehouse next Wednesday. Wednesday being the?
The 19th.
19th, thank you. From 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a walk-in. You don't have to pre-register, you just show up. It's the Johnson and Johnson, so it's one shot and you're done. It's anybody who's eligible. You don't have to live in the town, live in the state. It's anybody who wants a vaccination. You will be required to hang out for 15 minutes after your shot just to make sure that there's no side effects. It's being administered by Rescue, Inc. So they will have ambulance people there if there's any issues. No cost, please show up, please bring all your friends. They've been trying to do these within conjunction with the health department to get people out, or to get out to places where maybe people can't drive to Bennington or Brattleboro to make it a lot easier. So anybody you know that would like to get vaccinated and hasn't been able to, please come to the firehouse next Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00. They did Devil's Bowl Speedway, I don't know if anybody knows where that is. It's somewhere north of us. And they, they wound up doing 34 vaccinations. I'd like to see us get 150 or so. I'd like to really make the numbers look good so that maybe they'll come back and do it again for those that can't make Wednesday night. If you have trouble getting there, please call me or call the town office and leave a message for me. I am going to try to see if we can work something with the mover to maybe bring people there if they live in town or they're close. You know, let's help all our neighbors get vaccinated. It won't help for the meeting because it's the day after the meeting, but you know, it's going to help us get back to normalcy if you want to do it. I'm not advocating you need to get a shot or not, but if you want to, we want to make it as easy as you can. Anybody else have, go ahead, sir.
Put a poster up in the corner.
Pardon?
He's going to put a poster up in the corner.
Yeah, we did, we did put the sign out on the sign in front of the firehouse, so. Is there, is there anybody? Go ahead, sir.
Do you want to request volunteer drivers to give people rides? Do you want to make a, compile a list of people who could do that?
Yeah, if people would be interested in helping. We don't need help with the administration or anything there, they set that all up. But if people want to drive, please let me know and maybe I can hook you up with somebody who needs a ride. So Becky, too, if you have people that you know that are looking and you want to get them over here, give me a holler tomorrow.
Thank you. We've, most of our people are already vaccinated, but thank you, I will put that out there.
I have one other thing, but I'll hold that till the end. Does anybody else have any comments, anything they'd like to say, anything they'd like to, to ask the selectmen to consider in the future? Gosh, you guys are making this easy. We will be way done before lunch. Go ahead, Linda.
Linda, we need open mic again. Yay! We need live music, people are going nuts.
It's coming to the park. They have a full schedule this summer. It's pretty exciting. And-
Is that on the, is that posted somewhere?
They just finalized it. The full schedule will be in the Valley News on Memorial Day, issue on the 27th of May. So you can cut it out and keep it for the whole summer, but we have a full slate of entertainers.
And that's usually Sunday afternoons?
There's a Wednesday and mostly Sundays, yes.
Okay. So that's happening. See, you asked for it and they took care of it for you.
Well, I met here, the open mic that, that we were running here.
Yeah, I think July 1st, I don't know, who knows? I think pretty much that almost all the restrictions are supposed to be pulled after July 1st, so I don't know who was running that.
And he, the governor even hinted today that if we can get a few more people vaccinated, it may be earlier than that.
So I get a daily report, Monday through Fridays, from the health department. And as of today, 50% of the adult population in Vermont's been vaccinated completely. I think it was 60-something was at least one dosage, 67. And our positivity rate's down to 1%. It started climbing back up a little bit, so, you know. And if you think about it, too, Vicki and I had a long conversation last year when in Reedsboro, you know, a whole family was exposed, but they only tested one person because they, they were very, the tests were very scarce. And, you know, nowadays, they'll test everybody in the house and they'll test them each day. So we do a lot more testing and for, to have that positivity rate at 1% is really positive. So, you know, people have done a really great job in stamping, stamping this down. There's nothing else. I do know that the Planning Commission did want to do a survey and Andy, you know, you can't campaign at a polling place, but you can put stuff out for people to pick up. But we asked that if anybody wants, we're going to restrict it to probably one table. And so if the Planning Commission wants to hand out questionnaires, we need to kind of make sure that we have some, we just think about people being, having things sanitized, yes?
The Planning Commission, the questionnaire will also be available as a link and as a live interactive link from the town website as well. So it will be digital. We're also going to get those questionnaires out in places like the library or whatever where people can pick them up and look and just drop them off.
Okay. So there'll be a little box there if somebody wants to fill it out?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll have that available. I don't think, you know, it's, unfortunately, Girl Scout cookies are gone already, so we won't be able to get those. But if, you know, we'll, it's just kind of keep the handouts to a minimum just so that we're not passing around a lot of germs.
No pickles?
No, I said you got to read the book.
Got to read your book.
You better read your book and get ready, remember the exercise we all got to do, you know, just before we start. We all have to be able to raise our hands. So do you guys, this is like board, have anything else?
Becky? Becky? So going back to the Planning Commission, we had talked last night about, I have 10 iPads that we could use for folks at the town meeting to do their survey right online, right while they're there. We will make sure we have volunteers on hand to sanitize in between.
Yeah, why don't, Becky, I think we should discuss that before we just plan. I think that may be a little difficult because I think that's going to require some people interact with each other and, you know, then we wind up having meetings people can't hear. So, and I don't, there's not a lot of room between the voting. That's why we're just going to dedicate-
It needs to be before and after.
-one table. So maybe afterwards, we can announce it when people are done leaving, if we can get it away from the polling place.
Yep.
You could set something else up like that. But let me, let me talk with Andy first, just make sure, because we, again, the problem is, is Andy's got to be able to watch the town meeting and the polling and we also have to keep it so that we can hear. town meeting and the polling. And we also have to keep it so that we can hear. And everybody knows in this building, sometimes it gets a little loud when people are visiting and stuff. So.
So, we didn't really want to do it during the town meeting. It would be during the breaks. But yeah, definitely, you guys have my phone to call me. But it's an option.
Is that good, Andrew?
Yeah.
We'll kind of.
Yeah, I'll connect with Becky. It will work out something that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
That's why I have one more.
Yes, go.
So, we now have fiber here to this building. How was the connection? People online, was it better? Not good?
Not good.
Not good?
You keep freezing.
Okay, we're getting some heads up. I thought it worked for you, Jeanette?
It worked good.
Once I was grass connected, was that all right?
Lasted, no matter what.
Okay. Because we're going to have our reorganizational meeting on Wednesday night, the 19th, and we haven't really determined where we're going to do it. And this allows more people to come. So, if it works here, and people can access it remotely as well, this would be a better place for us to meet during the summertime. We can open the windows up a lot. There's a lot more space.
I'm running three systems and it's all.
Okay. It could be, could it be the other people's were freezing up and not ours?
It could be.
So, it may have been individuals freezing up and not, not this. But believe me, remember, folks, I'm the foot phone guy, so I'm not into technology. If there's nothing else, are you guys all set?
We're good.
So, we're going to, so the big thing, the next thing we would do is ask for an adjournment. But unfortunately, this isn't our meeting. It's the select board's meeting. So, they're going to have to adjourn it. So, I'm going to turn it back over to the select board chair. Thank you, everybody. These always work out good. It's always a good practice run. And we'll see you all in a, in a week.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 7:32. Second.
Second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
See everybody next week.